This evening, I'm the City Manager. Mr. Zurlag, another kind of catch-up on what's happening with the Transit Center. We have a pre-workshop discussion and we have another discussion item regarding a possible zoning. With that, Kathy, would you please call the board?
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Krent?
Here.
Mr. Maxwell?
Here.
Mr. Sanzika?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Mr. Tegel?
Here.
Mr. Alman?
Here.
All right, we had a forum this evening. Next is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Schultz?
Approval is prepared.
Question by Mr. Schultz. Second, Mr. Edmonds. Vote in motion, please.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Maxwell?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tegel?
Yes.
Mr. Alman?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next on the agenda is the minutes of the October 11th, 2011 regular meeting. Are there any changes to that or should we get approval accepted?
Some.
Approval submitted by Mr. Sanzika. The second from Mr. Schultz. Any discussion? Same no one. Vote in motion, please.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Maxwell?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tegel?
Yes.
Mr. Alman?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes. All right, the motion passes. Next is item four. It's a public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone present wishing to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? All right, same no one. We'll close that item and move to item five. Zoning Board of Appeals, ZBA report. Is that you, Mr. Stratt?
Right. Actually, we only had one item on the agenda and that was a variance for the operation of an hour, the operation of the hours beyond eight o'clock for their festival, their Oktoberfest. And that was for the Zellmann Church, which is on Levernice. And we did give them the variance of one hour after quite a bit of discussion. I guess they were concerned about why we had that eight-hour cutoff. But after the meeting, I explained to them, I thought, what the purpose was and they all agreed, so therefore, there's no problem with that. Other than that, that was a pretty short meeting. There were some other miscellaneous items that were discussed, which were really housekeeping items. Other than that, nothing else.
Great. Any questions? All right, we'll move on then to item six. Downtown Development Authority, DDA report.
The DDA meeting for this month was canceled, so there's no report.
All right, thank you for that report, Brent. And I'll move on to item seven, the planning and zoning report. Is that also you, Brent?
That's me as well. You recall the last planning commission meeting, I informed the planning commission that we had appointed, actually, the city manager had appointed two planning commission members to the Sustainable Development, Sustainable Design Review Committee. And those members are Mr. Stratt and Mr. Hudson. We have two applications pending and we've scheduled our first Sustainable Development Review Committee meeting. That will be Monday at noon in this room. One is, both projects involve proposed parking spaces in front of the building in the IB District and they're proposing some rain gardens and some other sustainable measures to kind of offset the additional parking. And if you'd like, anyone who'd like to look at the file, they're available for review in our office or I can email it to you.
Okay. Mr. Tegel?
How is the meeting going to be conducted? Is it just the committee or is the applicant going to be here to discuss what they're proposing?
The committee will be there and the applicants will be represented as well and any public that decide to go. It's a public meeting as per the Open Meetings Act. It's noticed on the board here.
Okay. Anything further on this item? All right, we'll move on to, next item is a presentation by Mr. Zurlag. Evolution to Achieve Organizational Sustainability. Do you mean evolution or revolution, Mr. Zurlag?
It was almost a resolution, a revolution at the beginning, but now it's an evolution. Thank you. And I do have handouts, but I learned, especially teaching graduate class last year, that if I hit my handouts, now I'd be looking at the handouts and then not at me. But to make it easy for you, what I have essentially is a part of my presentation and then what I'm going to tell you and my verbiage is also going to appear in great in the text as well, so there's no real need to take notes. But essentially, I wanted to thank you for-
Will it be a test?
No, it will not be a test.
Okay.
But I will answer any questions that you have and hopefully, I'll answer them to your satisfaction. If I don't know the answer, I'll get the answer at a later date, hopefully by the end of the week. But I have given this presentation to Mayor and Council and it went very well. And the end result essentially is to incorporate the entire community. And so, when you see what we did and where we are and where we need to go, I hope that you'll agree. And the first thing we had to do, this goes back to essentially 2009, 10, the end of 2009, beginning of 2010, was we had to have the council-manager partnership agree that economic sustainability is job number one for the community and the organization. And back in 2009, it was really job number one for the organization. What we had to do essentially is forecast a five-year revenue line, assuming no millage increases. And we also did this in 2009, 10, and our five-year revenue projection indicated falling revenue through fiscal year 2014. And to buttress our revenue projections, I went beyond our in-house experts and spoke with Bob Daddow, who also attended the city council meeting. Bob Daddow's the Deputy County Executive for Finance, as well as Matt Farrell, who you may know, who's the president of Core Properties and is expert in the commercial-industrial area. So between those two gentlemen and our city assessor, Nino, they had provided me a projection of essentially falling revenue. And thus far, they've been about 99% accurate. And again, there's the notes. We did that in 2009 exactly. We then had to indicate the annual deficit spending amount if no changes were made to the expense line. In other words, if we continue to deliver services the way that we have, I'll call that old school, what would our expenses be and how would that compare to our revenues? We did that also in 2009, 10. What we found out was a stark wake-up call to the realization that the organization, the city of Troy as an organization, was unsustainable in its current form and function. And we did this as well in 2009, 10. And if we did not make changes to reduce our expenditure line, there was a strong possibility that a financial manager would take over the city of Troy in the near future, a few years out. And that's called receivership. That would have been bad for everyone. Pardon my voice. I'm glad I got smoking 25 years ago. We then developed options delineating how the organization would look based on the priority of service delivery venues. And again, in 2009, 10, city council advanced a priority of public safety and infrastructure maintenance. In other words, police, fire, and public works, water, sewer, road, sidewalks. That meant that the quality of life and staff support venues would be cut or eliminated first in order to delay layoffs in our public safety and infrastructure maintenance areas. And those are hard decisions to make. And that's what I just said. We also agreed in the council-manager partnership that the best way to restructure the organization without going through a budget crisis every year, which is unfortunately what a lot of cities do, including the state of Michigan, actually, very recently, was to develop a longer-term budget. In other words, a three-year outlook for where we had to go and what our revenues would be, as well as our expenditures. And our first three-year budget was adopted in 2010, 11. We also mirrored Oakland County had a three-year budget as well. And when I gave that three-year budget, I didn't, I was unaware of, or I was uncomfortable on what the first slide would be because it was really essentially a very distressing budget document to present, especially for three years of falling revenue. So I went to the five stages of grief. And that's the first slide for my three-year budget, fiscal year 10, 11. And at that point in time, many people, including some of my own staff members, were at various stages. And, you know, there was examples all over the board. An example of denial, we heard is that, well, this can't be, no other city is saying that they're having a hard time financially. The manager and the staff must be alarmists. We also heard that the manager and the mayor are in a conspiracy to raise your taxes because it can't be that bad. Those are examples of anger and denial. There was magical thinking, you know, well, John, just add your staff, give a 40% pay cut and everything will be okay, you know? And when they get out of the box, they look and they come to work and be productive. But we did this again in fiscal year 10, 11 for a three-year budget. We then began restructuring the organization to find the most cost-efficient service delivery venue, given our declining revenue strength. And we did quite a bit. Our office recommended and city council agreed to many things. We had to, a complete privatization of the building inspection department, essentially went from about 23 people to zero people. We had complete privatization of the building, of the operation and management of our two municipal golf courses, Sylvan Glen and Sanctuary Lake. We regionalized animal control to Oakland County. We have a hybrid engineering department, especially thanks to Steve and Bill because back in 2009, 10, I had presidents of outside engineering firms tell me I should lay off the entire engineering department staff and we could save a lot of money. And what Bill and Steve did was to essentially take a look at existing contracts that we had with those engineering firms in conjunction with our $100 million, six-year floating capital budget document against our entire operational costs for managing engineering department. And we discovered that unfortunately, we had to lay off, or reduce the engineering firm by about 50%. But by doing that, we were cost competitive with the private sector. And we now have the best balance in a hybrid to manage our capital projects. And again, my dear Steve and Bill, kudos in that area. Also, kudos to Brent Savidak because we have a hybrid engineering, a hybrid planning department now. I think we have, what, five full-time people? Now we're down to two of the consultants.
Correct.
And so, we had a 60% elimination of our full-time staff there and we're saving money there as well. In-house code enforcement, we believe in what's called managed competition. And unlike planning and engineering and building, which essentially is an on-call, is a call for service, if you will, demand of service, code enforcement essentially is flight control and that's a five-day-a-week continual endeavor. We went out for bids on code enforcement and staff was cost competitive, so we were able to keep that announced. We had to expunge essentially all of our staff in the Troy Museum and Troy Nature Center. We do have volunteer boards now and they're both under the auspices of the COVID-1C 3. John Reagan is a strong volunteer in that area, so are Roger and Suzie Kowalski for the Outdoor Education Center. And in the museum, they had the benefit of a very strong Troy Historical Society, which continues to help keep that going as well. But there are no employees that work there that aren't under our authority in the city of Troy. All those actions that I just mentioned reduced our full-time staff by 51 people. And organizationally, from fiscal year 2005, '06, our full-time staff was cut from 485 people to 341 people. We cut 144 people full-time out of our organization. And that's over 30% of our full-time staff who's gone right now. And I still have to reduce about 34 positions in the police department. And those are my notes. Thank Mayor and Council for working with management to make the difficult decisions necessary to create a sustainable organization. We went through a lot, but the good news is that we're here. And standard reports, even though we have a declining revenue line, they took a look at our debt service and what we did to manage our expenses and they gave us a triple-A grade, given that we have a declining revenue line. What else we had to do essentially was change the culture of the organization in the city of Troy. And because we have a culture of professionalism that permeates our entire organization, acceptance of changed management was not an insurmountable task. And this became evident by having every employee, regardless of employee group, take at least a 10% concession. And I found this even more remarkable when we considered that our workforce has been reduced by more than one-third. And so, our employees were being asked to do more for less compensation. What I also found remarkable was that many labor unions reopened their contracts and ordered to realize concessions. And in the police and fire area, they had retraw arbitration, they told me to get lost to catch me for a couple of years, but every labor group, six of them, I negotiated, opened up their contracts to make concessions. As with our classified exempt employees. We also had an employee retirement incentive plan called an ERE. And that concession initiative not only reduced reliance on fund balance for our three-year budget, but we now have projected revenues exceeding projected expenditures for the first two years of our three-year budget. And in order to make sure that we were sound in our methodology, I engaged our actuarial firm, Gable, Roer and Smith, and they put us against a five-year time horizon. And we looked essentially at employees that would take advantage of the ERE against new employees that would come in or those positions that were not going to be filled. And because Troy is a leader essentially in what's called a tiered benefit approach, our new hires not only came in at a lower rate of pay, but they also came in at a lower rate of benefits. We no longer offer retirement healthcare for employees across the board. And all employees that we began in 1997 no longer receive a pension that's called a defined benefit, which essentially has a huge legacy cost. All of our employees that come in have a defined contribution of pension benefit. And we're at about 80% of all of our full-time employees are in defined contribution, only about 20% are in defined benefit. And I want to thank our employees because of those concessions along with best practices. We were able to reinstate our 24-hour snowmobile protocol on county, major, city, major, and local streets of Troy. And that, that's huge. You'll notice a big difference this year compared to last year. And we inked a deal with the road commission for Oakland County two weeks ago and we agreed to plow snow on all the county major roads of Troy. And as planning commissioners, you know that there's a slew of county roads in Troy. Most of the major roads of Troy are county roads. But with the boring snowfall, with the 24 hours after that, snow stops, all the streets, county, city, major, as well as city, local, it's overflopped. And additionally, we're able to do this mostly within house personnel because of cross-training and reinstating eight positions in the public works department as recommended by the International City Management Report on Sustainability. In other words, the first cuts that I made were too much according to ICMA and they said that with those cuts, we'd have been unsustainable, called a worst component. And so, what we did was we added back eight positions in the budget. We combined all maintenance budgets, so they're now under public works, combined some positions and we began cross-training. And we're also now more cost-efficient than the private sector in terms of snowmobile. And that's where we were. What we're doing is carrying on the continuous improvement process and that's the best practices and the ICMA recommendations, which are essentially what I'm saying because those recommendations were seriously best practices that we implemented. And we have a comprehensive list on our website of, we had recently completed staff reports from public works, fire, police departments, and building operations are also on our website. I believe that retention and attraction of quality employees is also a best practice. And I'm not going to bore you with the submissions we're having there, so let us continue on. Governor Snyder, at the lead conference a few weeks ago, was a speaker there and he indicated that a municipality does not really know how well it's performing unless a comparative analysis is made. And that was one of the reasons that a performance dashboard is required to receive a portion of state-shared revenue. And I could not agree with that more. We have our dashboard and I recommend to everyone, council staff, commissioners, residents, businesses, and colleagues, that if another city is doing something better than we are for best practice, please let me know what that practice is and I'll be happy to pirate that idea and incorporate that in the city of Troy. Right here, if I may. Two years ago, I asked you and Lucardi to take our highest level of tactical values and then project out under a certain slate of assumptions when we'd break even again to that level. And this is also calibrated by Bob Daddow in Oakland County. And what they came up with essentially was 20 years before we get back to our 2020 levels in terms of tactical values. That's a long time. And what we did, if you'll notice the, I hit the right button here, we're projecting in 2014 essentially its only bottom out. And we drove the organization of Troy to reduce expenditures in line with our declining tactical value. And from an organizational restructuring perspective, we'll continue with best practices, but most of them will be more akin to rabbit hunting than elephant hunting. We already got the big issues out of the way. I'm sure we'll find a better way to pin catch bases and save a few bucks here and there, but the large reductions in staff, the large private sector takeovers, we're essentially finishing that regard. We'll always look to best practices. So given all that we've accomplished, I believe the council-management partnership has a new, more evolved job number one. And that is to engage the entire community for reason of doing whatever it takes to increase our tactical value. That's not saying to increase the millage rate, it's saying to increase our residential, commercial, industrial plants that we have in Troy. And it's not just any longer an organizational objective for sustainability, it becomes a community objective and we need everyone's help in this regard. Went to Forbes magazine and their July issue had the top 25 best large venture areas to do business. And I think that on a regional basis, that should be one of our objectives as well. And this is their list, the top 25. Michigan is nowhere on that list. I then went and took a look at the attributes of the top 25 venture area. And it's an aggregate, if you will, but take a look at what they have. We in Troy and in the region have many of those attributes. So if we can get our act together regionally, we may be able to break into Forbes' list at some future point. And if we accomplish those objectives, increasing our tactical value citywide and regionally breaking into top 25 places in the USA to do business, that would bring in more private-centered jobs, be a destination point for young professionals and a talented workforce, it would be a draw for quality of life and entertainment venues and attract and retain a talented workforce, as well as upgrade our infrastructure and infrastructure maintenance. And that's essentially my presentation, answering questions you may have and wanting to use this also as a bridge to the new city council because essentially, we're finished, mostly finished with the organizational enhancements. And now, we can evolve to look at the community, to do what we can to increase our tactical value.
Any questions?
John, how do you think we compare with our neighbors?
In terms of-
In terms of where they're at and where we're at in terms of the cuts that are being made?
Well, I'm not going to give any disveraging remarks to any of my colleagues or sister cities, but two and a half years ago, I had folks from other communities put their hand on my shoulders and say, we feel sorry for you, John, you have all these problems in Troy. We don't have these problems. Now they go on their website and look where their forecasts are, two to three to five years, and there are millions, tens of million dollars in the hole unless they do something very similar to what we did. And they, if they only had one-year budgets, the gap between revenues and expenditures for them is greater. So their challenge is even harder now. So I think we compare favorably. You know, we have to make a lot of hard decisions. The employees that are left know that if they do a good job, they'll have a good job and that frees them up to be more productive. So look at the community, they're not that concerned about keeping their job, they know where they are on their organizational chart for three years and we can move forward and raise the community and partner with them to increase our tactical value. Other communities are, they don't know what they're doing unless they get huge infusions of millage increases and we're low, the lowest to begin with. And so, they have to look first, I think, at their organization, where they can go out to the community. To get a sense of place, you have to first have a solid business organization.
I've got a question, John. Is there any thought of bringing a citizen group together that would address raising tactical value of homes and bringing in business? We need to raise revenue, obviously. We have the chamber congress in place, we have homeowners associations in place. I would think it would be prudent to bring residential people together, along with business people, to incubate ideas that would push this forward. We have to take the time to lobby for not only bringing in new business, but talking to the businesses that are here and making sure when they expand, we do it here. We also would like to see people that drive to work here, move here, many people work here but don't live here. That's another target group. So I'd like to see some sort of focus or tangible group, some outcome of this that would bring people together to start making some of these things happen.
I couldn't agree more. And again, thanks to the planning commission. We had, we were internal for a couple of years on restructuring the organization. And essentially, we had to be, look at best practices, went to essentially professional associations and do that for a living. So we restructured our organization to be economically sustainable. And in conjunction with that, the planning commission, the jury helped, gave us a new master plan of land use, as well as an up-to-date zoning ordinance. And, you know, those are other two important arrows in our quiver of economic development. So that puts us, I think, ahead of the game yet again. And again, hopefully, the new council will embrace this concept of engaging the entire community to indicate what we can do to increase our tactical value and, you know, partner, as you mentioned, you know, with the chamber, with the educational facility, I think it's called beds and beds, you know, the education facility in the medical community to see what we can do with existing businesses, resident groups. Absolutely.
I think it's important that we ask citizens to do things. I mean, I'm tired of seeing my property go down. I'd love to do things to increase my investment in that home that I made. But when times are tough and things are in decline, that's the time we have to ask, we have to ask people too. We have to ask them, ask things of them, you know? Not just say, well, we do this, we do that, don't ask for anything. I think in our town, we need to ask for things, ask people, look, we need people to do this. As far as I'm concerned, we have a lot of misdirected anger here, being you see every council meeting. I may have the point the last few years, I talked to people because we've had a lot of controversy about the villages and the library, things like that. And I was curious, I was asking people, what do you think and why? And almost across the board, I'd run into an awful lot of people that were angry. And could they tell me why they were angry? Well, they had lost money, they had lost jobs, they were hurting. This seemed to be the basis of it. As to the reasons why they didn't want certain things, didn't want the library, or thought that there was money in town, the city was lying, things like that. I really couldn't find any solid answers to that, other than the fact they were just angry. So, but that being the case, it's still anger. And we have to direct that. We have to address the fact these people are angry, they're angry about certain things, address that, and then move in a positive direction. Take that anger and turn it into something positive, something to do, turn things around. Because you can complain, but complaining alone won't get it done. We have to do things, we have to take action and obviously, you know, do the right kinds of things to bring revenue to the town.
Was there excellent comments that we're all part of a team effort to move the city forward?
You bet. Mr. Schultz?
I don't even know if you remember, John, but I went through Citizens Academy probably 10 or 11 years ago. And you and I were standing in the DPW garage and I asked you at the time how you ran your city with so few people. And I want to applaud you, but mostly I want to applaud your employees because they are doing a superb job with drastically fewer personnel. And I'm still extremely proud to live in this city. And I know this is not a mileage discussion, but do you by any chance, while we're sitting here, have a handle on what it would take to save those 30-plus police officers you mentioned that you're going to have to get rid of in the next year?
You know, I don't. And I'll tell you why. I don't have a handle on our revenue line. Our preference would be to put back things in the organization that was deducted by increasing our revenue line. And again, we're okay this fiscal year, we're okay next fiscal year, the layoffs haven't occurred till it's '15, '16. And so we have a couple of years to essentially...
Reason I asked...
Yeah.
The reason I asked is that the thing that citizens tell me when I talk to them, the thing they're most concerned about is the first people that are going to know that our police department has been downsized are the criminals.
Absolutely.
And we're not used to living in a city like that. So that was the only reason I brought it up.
Good question. We're the safest city in Michigan, over 75,000 population, and we are the 13th safest city in the United States over 75,000 population. And that's thanks to the community and thanks to our police force.
John, since I think we all understand and comprehend the need for economic development, I know you lost economic development specialist and could you let us know where you're at and perhaps replacing that position?
Yes. In fact, Mark Miller and Monica Ireland interviewed and they recommended someone to me that I approved and I forgot his name, I think it was Lyndon...
It's Glenn Lopin.
Oh, Glenn Lopin, thank you. I believe he was with Detroit Renaissance for a number of years and then that area collapsed. He was on the planning commission for Huntington Woods for a number of years and came highly recommended. So he'll start whenever we can get him to start to be part of the community and economic development sleeve. And I'm looking forward to that position because we're into, as you know, economic gardening and we need an individual to represent the city of Troy, make cold knots, continue to their existing business and see what we can do to, you know, keep them in Troy and network further other businesses and hire people as well. We also have a, what I call, manager roundtable every month, I'd like to reengage that. The good news on that venue is that on the last four meetings that we've had, every company that we invited was hiring people. So it was a good sign. Not in the trolls that were laid off, but they're hiring people now, so it's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garrett.
Great. You're glad to have him?
Sure. Okay. Can hand that out and we'll take a three-minute break.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Thank you.
I'm not very careful.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, again, that's really about...
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, John.
Yeah.
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 ...site as page eighty-eight, so it was a point of reference for everybody. But we were approached by Mr. Garrett from Lads Inc., and he wanted to go before the Planning Commission to informally discuss a potential rezoning application. Many of you are familiar with this site. It's located on the south side of Waddles, East Rochester Road. It's about two acres in size and it's zoned R-1C. And the reason some of you may, this may seem familiar to some of you, is there was a conditional rezoning application that was before, a few years ago, I think just before the market kind of fell off. And it was for a rezoning application to O-1 office. And there was a rendition or two that was before the Planning Commission. And just to kind of, those of you who may remember, I think there was, the Planning Commission gave some constructive comments to the applicant, and it appeared that they really weren't listening. I guess I'll just leave it at that, but it's, it's, excuse me. As indicated, zoned R-1C, and the properties to the north, the south, and the east are also zoned R-1C, uses single-family homes. Property to the west, and abutting, abutting this to the west is zoned N-N neighborhood node, and it's used as a commercial daycare. Now, the future land use plan classifies the area as a single-family residential, and it does obviously abut the neighborhood node in the plan. And I remind the Planning Commission that one of the goals of the master plan is to protect single-family residential neighborhoods. Now, what the applicant has indicated, that they would like to potentially pursue the RT, two-family district zoning classification. Now, for detached homes, that requires 5,000 square foot minimum lot size, and with a minimum of forty-foot wide lots. Again, attached dwellings are permitted, but they're not proposing that in the sketch that they gave us. This is a, kind of an interesting site, because it is truly a transition area between the node and single-family residential. For quite some time, there was a construction road that provided access to the, for the site condominium located to the south while it was, while it was under construction. It is close to Rochester Road, obviously front of Waddles, next to a neighborhood node. And I think at the time, and I can't speak for the Planning Commission, but your, the Planning Commission's mood seemed to be that you were supportive of the concept of rezoning to O-1, provided the design was appropriate. And you strongly kind of hinted to the applicant at the time that they needed to improve their treatment of the transition, the buffering between, you know, the office and the single-family. And I think that probably holds true here. To permit the rezoning to, to more intense use, they would need to demonstrate proper treatment of that transitional use in this area. The, some of the tools they could use for transitioning include, would include landscaping materials, berms, open space, walls, et cetera. So with that being said, oh, I should also note, in the packet, there's a, there's a sketch, there's some elevations, and floor plans for potential units. And there's a excerpt from the City Council Master Plan describing both the single-family neighborhood classification and the neighborhood node classification. With that being said, I, you know, I'm going to open it up for dialogue.
All right. Any questions for Brent at this time? All right. And Mr. Garrett, if you'd like to speak to us for here. Just have the microphone.
Thanks for allowing me to appear before you tonight. It's a little different from what I've experienced in the past, to be able to come on an informal basis and address the Planning Commission. The economics of the development business today are such, is that you can't afford to try to perfect ideas that are never going to happen, because they won't be accepted. So, it's really helpful to be able to come and talk to you about this, and see what your thoughts are, and see if I can get some encouragement to do this. I happen to live in a project similar to this, that's known as Chatfield, which is at the northwest corner of Waddles and Coolidge. That was our one B area, and essentially, those are seventy-foot lots in there, and it's been a very successful project. I am involved in another project similar to this, that was an attached condominium project in the Clarkston area, with Robertson Brothers. And, of course, when the market went down, for several reasons, you, in the first place, you cannot finance sticks and bricks today. So if you're going to sell one condominium in a four-unit building, you've got a problem. You just can't do it. But aside from that, I think that most people would prefer the single-family feel, and have maintenance, et cetera, and the ease of living that you would get in a condominium. And that's exactly what we have in Chatfield. So, as a result of this, we reduced what was sixty-two units to, I think, thirty-eight or nine fifty-foot sites out there, and we're selling reasonably well. The pictures of the houses and the floor plans reflect what is being done out there. They would not necessarily reflect exactly what we would do here. We might be a little larger, and we would use more brick, and so on, in this market. That happens to reflect the materials that are on the existing buildings that were already there. I think that with, we're proposing fifty-two-foot lots with a forty-foot building envelope. We're showing some rain garden area and bio, stormwater areas. There is, I think, a pretty good border of trees along the property to the east, but that plan could be worked out to add to that. I think this plan keeps with the zoning ordinance, in that it is a suitable transition, single-family from the pod on the corner, and I would think would not really change the feel of the neighborhood, because it's still going to have a single-family feel. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, and... Yes?
Is this going to be set up like a condominium where the maintenance will be managed, and where you live?
Yes.
So this would fit into that idea, if someone wants to leave their existing, present single-family home, and get away from the maintenance aspect, and perhaps a smaller house than they're living in now?
Yes, exactly. And there is a market here for that. There are a lot of people who want to downsize and don't need the bigger house anymore, and they don't want the maintenance, and this would allow them to stay in Troy, and continue to be citizens. And, and we might add, I just listened to John's comments there about tax space. We're probably talking about two and a half million dollars in that area here, of value versus, you know, nine hundred that you would get with three lots.
Well, Mr. Garrett, the difference between this development and Chatfield would be that Chatfield is in a completed residential area. It's close to Coolidge there.
Yes.
There's just one single home between your development and Coolidge. Here, you're close to Rochester Road, you're abutting a commercial property.
Exactly.
The transition there has to be, you know, a fairly well-defined transition in some sense. Also, you want to walkability around that site, so that the people, see, I'm not really opposed to some type of residential development going in there, as long as there's a really strong sense of transition between, you know, that commercial property heading into your development there, and that people, that there's a sense that the people that live in that development can use and walk to nearby commercial establishments, for one. Landscaping things would be another. So that's, without having known anything further at this time, that would be, that's just my thoughts and opinion, only mine, so...
Well, I think we indicate that we do some green belt work along the west side, which would be the border on the pod, and we'll do what we need to do, too. I mean, this is yet to be further developed, you know, with landscaping all around it.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Garrett, would you be, are you leaning towards submitting a conditional rezoning application, which would entail a site plan that would be submitted at the same time as a rezoning request? Or would you be proposing to first submit the rezoning application, and then move forward with the site plan application? And before you answer, just, I just want to remind everybody, including you, Mr. Garrett, that that's voluntary, the Planning Commission can't require it, it's got to be voluntary on your part.
Okay. Well, this'll be my first effort at doing this, under the conditional rezoning, but it just appeared to me, after discussions with you, that that might be, the R-1T would be the suitable category, and we would be willing to do it on a conditional basis. I'm, I would like to know just what the parameters are, whether we have to have an exact plan that, to the shrub and all this kind of stuff, or we just come in with some parameters and building envelopes and appearances, as far as elevations go. We don't have a problem with that. You have to ask about porches. You'll notice that those buildings do have porches, and they're not, as you phrase it, garage dominant necessarily. And we would add to the elevations, there's going to be a lot more brick, and we would do some things, I think, here in this market, that we don't need to do out there, so... But, you know, I would have to work with you to get the direction about how specific we have to be with any conditional rezoning.
It would, really, I can answer that very quickly, Mr. Chairman. It's basically the same level of information you would require as an application for a site condominium or subdivision approval, same level of information, no more, no less. And also, just regarding the porch comment I made, my comment was, to Mr. Garrett, was piggybacking what you said, Mr. Chairman, was, was, there needs to be walkability, and in my opinion, only in my opinion, a relationship as a people, as a place for people, not just automobiles. So that's where my comment about the porch is, in that, you know, having a, not a garage-dominated unit, but a unit that you're going to be comfortable walking to, and walking to the adjoining neighborhood node, and walking back to, and that was my, where I was coming from.
Sure. Mr. Sanzeca?
Yeah, I, I think it's a great concept. The only thing, because I'm concerned about is the density, I mean, the amount of units you have in such a small area. And, you know, I don't see any open space, I don't see any park areas or anything in there that will provide the residents any opportunity to be outside and to be involved in the, in the community. And, you know, years ago, I worked on a mobile home park development, and we had sixty-foot lots. And here, we have a fifty-two-foot lot with single-family homes, and you have a T turnaround at the end, where you're proposing, for the traffic. And to me, that just seems like you're stuffing a lot of units into a small area. There again, I don't want to be negative, because I think it's a great concept, but I just think the density is so heavy, and so, there's so many units in there, that, you know, if you consider possibly one less unit to provide, you know, a little bit more room, a little more, possibly a cul-de-sac at the end, or some way for the traffic to be able to move and, or flow for the residents, I would really encourage something like that. That's my opinion, I don't know if the rest of the Planning Commission feels the same way, but it just seems like there's a, putting ten pounds on an eight-pound box. It's just, it's just really a dense unit development.
That's good. But Mr. Strang, you can come?
No, Mr. Garrett, I'm personally not as concerned about the amount of brick that you have on your, that's something you're selling, that's something that you're marketing, and it's not your, but we are concerned, one of the suggestions, again, piggyback on the comments that were made, is we'd like to have a place of destiny, a place where people can enjoy or want to be at. And one of the things that I'm looking at here is, I know that you have your bioswales that you were talking about, on the very south end, and maybe you might want to consider doing something with those bioswales, and making them attractive, and have park benches on, actually, the transition side on the front of the, what is it, Waddles? And do something like that, that would be a part of the transition of what we're trying to do with the node concept. We're trying to get people to walk and to have a place, so that there is a destination that they can relax at, or that sort of a thing. And combine it, and be creative with your bioswales, because those bioswales can be really attractive. They can be a focal point for you. And it would be a selling point for you as an entry point to the whole sub or that area. But that's my suggestion, anyway. Maybe I'm off base, but I'm trying to be as creative as I can for you, thinking out of the box.
Well, you know, I'm interested in your opinions. As, you know, as a seasoned citizen, who live in a project like this, you don't see too many people out doing much. You know, a lot of them are gone all winter, they're not there, and so, you know, park benches and things like that aren't a problem. We do, we have that greenbelt area along Waddles Road, I mean, we could do something there. And I guess my question to you is, are you interested in something that's more internal for the exclusive use of the residents of that little project? Or are you interested in providing other park benches, what have you?
We want the walkability.
For other people, the walkability for other people.
For everyone, yes. That's my opinion, at any rate, yes. Whether you have a shelter area or something like that, that could be a destination, a point destination, maybe you might even want to, maybe have a couple of even bicycle racks for somebody if they want to come from another area just to sit there. I don't know. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to create points of destination.
Well, you know, that's food for thought. What's going to happen is that, of course, the people that live in that condominium project are going to have to support that. They're going to support the road, and whatever's there, is part of that condominium. And, you know, the marketability of inviting everybody else in to enjoy the things that they're paying for, I'm not sure of. But we do have a little gazebo in Chatfield. It doesn't get much use, frankly, but it's there. But that's almost impossible for anybody else to get to. You can see it from Waddles, but you have to go in to get to it. There's a walkway to get back behind the houses. So, that's something that, you know, would have to be considered.
Mr. Schultz?
As probably the longest-term condominium dweller, since it's the only kind of real estate I've ever owned. I don't have a problem with the density. I have a problem with the lack of parking. If somebody decides to have a party, there's virtually no place for them to put any cars, because you're only going to be allowed parking on one side of that twenty-eight-foot street. And, just personal note, if you're looking at doing a condominium development, I think there should be something in the bylaws that says that the garages cannot be used for storage, they shall be used for parking vehicles, because you don't have anywhere near enough parking. Because in houses this size, a lot of people are going to fill their garage with all their stuff, and their cars are going to sit out on the parking, on the driveway, and when somebody comes over to visit, there's no place, I figure you might have room for five, maybe seven cars to park, other than in driveways in this entire development. And that's, that's of concern to me, because parking in condo developments is usually grossly lacking. I like the idea of the, of the close quarters, I think fifty-foot lots are fine, but I think you need to work some parking somewhere.
Well, I guess I'm relating to my experience in Chatfield. I mean, we don't have, there's no parking areas whatsoever in Chatfield. We have a twenty-eight-foot street, and we do happen to have a little cul-de-sac down there, a little loop. But, again, you know, what I foresee is our target market. There are some family parties that do occur, but that's, that's about it. At least, that's been my observation where I live now, so... But, you know, we'll consider that.
Chatfield has three-car garages, two, not two cars.
Yes, they do.
Mr. Tagle? What is your target market? Can you define that for us?
Empty nesters, is the best way I can define it.
I tend to agree with Mr. Sanzeca's comment about the density. I don't have a problem with the fifty-foot lots and the closeness of the homes, but it just seems like it's wall-to-wall building, and there's no open space, you know, just, even if it's for the neighbors to go for a walk and sit down around one of these water features, I think, would, let me ask you, would the, would reducing this by one unit make the deal economically and feasible?
Well, I can't say that I got that far along yet, but I doubt that it would.
Okay. I, at least for myself, and it sounded like for Phil, that if you could, you know, consider doing something, you know, like, number one, it would give you an opportunity to do a cul-de-sac at the end, plus an opportunity to just open up some green space, so people have a place to, you know, on a summer evening, just take a walk and sit outside somewhere. I think it really would promote community within this community.
So you're thinking that the green space could be down at the south end, for instance?
Yeah. I mean, you do have a, you do have a twenty-five-foot buffer up in the front, which I think could be developed as a nice portal for your development. Whether or not that would be the place that I would go and want to sit, I'm not so sure. But I think somewhere more internal to the, to the development would be more...
And we could do something at the south end, we've got some green space down there anyway, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, that could be considered.
Anything further? Mr. Garrett, do you have what you need from us this evening?
Well, I think so. I, you know, we've got your comments, and we'll consider them, and see if we can work them into a feasible plan.
Thank you very much.
And hopefully, we'll be back to see you, not too far down the road.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Next on the agenda, we have the Transit Center pre-workshop discussion. We haven't heard a, in detail, a report on the Transit Center for a while, so hopefully we can catch up on what's happening and prepare. This is probably a pre-workshop discussion, there was a design workshop that was agreed to as part of the City Council's resolution, I believe this has to do, or tying with that, correct?
Yes. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Bandit.
Mr. Chairman, it's great to be here, I'm happy to be here, I am thrilled to be here to talk about Transit Center.
It's nice to have you here. Who are you convincing, yourself?
Well, it's been five years since the preliminary design started, and it's been eleven years since the consent judgment allowed us to obtain this property for transit use. And the fact that I'm standing here tonight means that the EA has been approved, and the MDOT agreement has been approved by City Council, and we are finally moving on to design. Now, as you recall, there was, when the site plan was approved about a year ago, there were six design questions that were part of the resolution by City Council, that were to be considered with the Planning Commission at a future design workshop, after the environmental assessment had been approved. So, here we are. Currently, I just want to bring you up to date on other things that are happening. We are out right now with an RFP for Architect Engineering Services, and that proposal is due November second, and we expect to award it at a City Council meeting in December. We will soon be out with a RFP for a construction manager at risk, and we are expecting to award that sometime in February. And as I mentioned, it's been about a year since Troy and Birmingham approved the site plan, and that particular site plan included a 2,400-square-foot building, a tunnel under the tracks, and a platform on the Birmingham side, parking lots on both the Troy and Birmingham side, and there was access to the platform from Birmingham, and also from Troy through In April of this year, we got very close to getting our EA approved with that plan, and as Mark Miller likes to say, we were on the one-yard line, and we were about to score, and then Birmingham pulled out. And that was a very, for me, anyway, was a very traumatic occurrence, and it instantly caused concern with the FRA as to where do we go from here? How do we modify this plan so that we can still move forward? And I'm sure probably all of you know, the reason Birmingham dropped out is because they were not able to acquire the land necessary to make that project happen. So, we set out to modify the plans the best way we could, hoping that we could please the FRA, we could continue with our EA work, and hopefully, we could get the EA approved with the modified plan. And the plan that we started working on was, obviously, we eliminated the tunnel, we thought, why not put the platform on the Troy side? And, obviously, everything, all of the Birmingham side was eliminated, there is no land over there. But there is space for, for the platform, as I'll talk about later, because that's in the CN, CN Railway. So, we have, we have this new plan, and we're talking with FRA, and we're talking with CN Railroad, and we start talking about what is needed to bring the train to the east track for the platform on the Troy side. And it was determined that we would need two switches, switching here, that would cost, in their estimation, about 1.5 million dollars. Plus, CN Railroad asked that we, that someone step up and maintain these switches for twenty years. Although the cost of the 1.5 million was high, we, it was kind of a wash, because the tunnel went away, and all the improvements on the Birmingham side went away. So we thought, well, maybe we could still do this within the funding that we had available. So, we went on our merry way, designing this thing, and in July of this year, we came to a realization brought about by FRA and CN, that this plan with the switches would not be feasible. And the reason is, the track on the east side is a track that is in somewhat poor condition. And CN has talked for a few years now about actually removing that east track. And they asked MDOT if they would step up and pay to upgrade that track, and that declined. We didn't have the money to maintain the switches, and FRA felt, well, if we go ahead with this plan and put in these switches, and the track gets removed on the east side, then we pretty much spent a lot of money for nothing. So the entire plan fell apart in July, and in August, we came up with an alternate plan, which we had considered many, many months before, we considered all different options. And we came up with this alternate plan, which is a bridge. And I think about four years ago, when we looked at it, we thought, no, the bridge just doesn't, it won't work because of the clearance that we need above the track and below the electrical lines and everything else. Well, we took a second look at it, and found that we could meet those clearances. And we came up with a simple plan, showing all those required clearances, and we sent that off to FRA. And if you look at some of these plans in detail, I'm not sure if it's this one or not, but it'll show you what the elevations are. For example, the bottom of the bridge is about twenty feet above the, above the track, and we have sufficient clearance to leave, but no, excuse me... And we have sufficient clearance to leave... no, excuse me, to meet the ITC electric lines. So we have a plan that we submitted to FRA and they liked it. They liked it because it enabled Birmingham to get back, to have access to the Transit Center at some point in the future, if and when they acquire property on their side. With the other plan that we had with platform on the Troy side, Birmingham would not only have to acquire property, they'd have to build a bridge to get there. So this plan with a bridge and the platform on the Birmingham side within the CN Railroad was attractive to the FRA. And it's almost, not quite as good as the original plan, but it almost met the original objective, which is, of course, to have access from both sides of the tracks. So in August, the bridge was added. It was given an okay by the FRA. And we continued to modify the EA documents, correcting everything that related to Birmingham and modifying the EA document. And low and behold, in September, the environmental assessment was approved. And in that document, as well as other documents that were submitted to the FRA, like the project management plan, statement of work, financial plan, the official title of the Transit Center is the Troy Multi-Modal Transit Facility. Multi-Modal Transit Facility, but I'm going to keep calling it the Transit Center. So that brings us to today, where we are here talking about Transit Center in an upcoming meeting to talk about the points that we'll raise and the council resolution points that you folks offered. And we would hope to conduct this one-day workshop with you in January. This would be after we had the architect-engineering firm under contract. And it'll be after we've had the chance to get them up to speed on all aspects of the project. And hopefully, by that time, they'll have their design pieces flowing. And we will have them present with you at the design meeting. And we hope to work out some of the holes in this project as we see it now. So the purpose of my being here tonight is to bring you up to date, which I've just done, and to ask you to start thinking about the six design questions that are to be addressed at the one-day workshop for the council resolution. Remember, only the tunnel... only the tunnel that has been replaced with the bridge. Everything else on the Troy side is the same. That's the plan. That's part of the EA. That's what was approved by FRA. Can we make some changes? Yeah, we can make some changes. In fact, we need your input, especially on the bridge. The bridge has the least amount of design detail of anything on the site. All it is, is it's shown as a truss bridge. It has the proper clearances, but what material it's made out of, what finishes it has, what color it is, that is completely unknown. We did not have time to do any of that work and nor could we because we had to have the EA approved. We had to get the design engineer under contract in order for the grant monies to pay for that design work. So we want to meet with you and have our architect engineer with us at that meeting to get your ideas. So I'm giving you a heads up on that. And also, I'd like to review the design elements, actually, the design questions that were the six design questions that I mentioned. And I rephrased them in a question format, so they may sound a little bit different than yours in Houston. Number one, and this is in question format. What should be added to the building facade to create visual interest? And we would hope that you could think about this and envision, what should be added, changed, or subtracted to the building facade to create visual interest? I don't know how to interpret this. You guys wrote it. And so you need to think about what that means and how that is translated into the design. Number two, what should be added to the building to create more identical... a more identifiable building entrance? Remember, there was a lot of discussion about a vertical element and that usually signifies the interest of the building. Well, now with the bridge, the vertical element now is now the elevator. That's obviously the highest element of this building. Number three, what should be added to the plaza area to create a greater sense of arrival, i.e. a major point of interest? And this is something that I added. Should the compass be replaced? Remember the compass? And I think it's in one of these slides. It's somewhere to a compass that was constructed in downtown Plumb. Should we keep that? Should we go to something else? What should we do there? And we can make these minor changes so long as we stay within the budget and so long as we stay within the two-year timeframe. And I forgot to mention, and I'll say it now, is when the funding, MDOT funding agreement was approved, that started the two-year clock. Clock started October 1st. And there is a two-year requirement that this Transit Center must be designed, built, and completed by October 1st, 2013. Two years. That's all we got. The resolution that council passed approving the MDOT agreement said that the facility, the MDOT agreement, is approved at zero cost to the city. Zero cost. The agreement states that if there is any cost overrun, it's the city's chair. There's no federal, there's no state participation. It's all ours. It is our goal. It is our mission. It's our charge to build this transit facility without any cost to the city. Number four, what should be added to or near the building to create visual interest with human-scale elements at the building? Your words, not mine, so we need some direction, some description of what needs to be changed, added to satisfy that desire. Number five, what transitional features should be added between the building, the bridge, and the platform? Number six, what additional cost-effective, sustainable design features should be added to the site or building? Speaking of sustainable design features, this project had a LED grant. It had a grant. We lost that grant because we were unable to proceed with the project in the timeframe that was required by the grant. That grant, it was required that this project be a demonstration project for sustainable design. So it included LED lights. It included geothermal. It included reusing water to flush toilets and irrigate the landscape. And it also included a green roof. And the goal was that the project be LEED certified at the Silver level. That's still our goal, but we may not be... we may not become certified. Certification costs $50,000 to $70,000 after the project is done in order to go through the process of certification. Project is done on October 1st, 2013. We have to certify after that, so all that cost is City of Troy. We don't think we're going to go there. Our goal is to continue to shoot for a Silver status with LEED, but we may not. We probably will not become certified. So those are the six design questions that we want your input on. Think about them. We have until January to meet with the architect engineer to talk about them. And there are some additional questions that I put on the table for you to consider. And I'd like to go through those with you now. Number one is, what elements of the building architecture should be carried through to the bridge? Remember that bridge, there's... it's not been detailed. We don't know what design cues, what features of the canopy in the building should be carried through to either complement or contrast with the bridge, or I'm sorry, with the building in the canopy. And number two is, and this, I think, is a big one. Should the building be moved? The building is placed because of the tunnel and the need for a ramp that goes down to the tunnel. We needed that space to get a slope that met the ADA requirements. Now, we don't have that. We have basically a flat area. So should that building be moved? Should it be moved parallel to the tracks? Maybe it should. If the building stays in the current location, should the door to the building be moved? Should the location of the elevator inside the building be moved? Should the stairs be moved? And what should be the configuration of the stairs? Right now, we are showing a stairs that are just switchback stairs. You know, you go down one set, hit a landing, a couple landings, actually. And then you turn and you go down the other set. It's just like, you know, a stairwell in a building. Pretty basic, pretty simple, but there's a lot of things you could actually do with stairways. You could have one stairway go off in this direction and then off in that direction. You have spiral stairs. You can do a lot of different things with steps. And keep in mind that those steps are going to be going up, about 20 feet up in the air. So that's going to be, from a visual standpoint, that's going to catch your eye, as well as the vertical element, which is now the elevator shaft. That's part of the building. And then finally, which design feature should be eliminated, if any? The one that I gave an example of is, should the green roof be eliminated? The building itself is 2,400 square feet. The green roof obviously does add cost. There is some benefit because it takes water out of the storm system and reuses it... well, not reusing it, but it reduces the runoff. But it's a very, very small reduction in runoff. And is it worth, I throw it out there, is it worth the cost of that green roof? And as I said, this is no longer a demonstrated of a sustainable design demonstration project. So we want your input, not only the six items that I mentioned, but also the ones that I just threw out there. And there could be more that you might come up with.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, this is a silly question, but will the train actually stop for the Troy location as well as the Birmingham location until such time as Birmingham gains access? Is it going to stop that far apart? Because they have a station.
Yes. Until such time as the Troy station is built, they will continue to stop on the Birmingham side.
No, that's not my question. After the Troy station...
No, they won't. I'm sorry. The...
Birmingham location?
Yeah, which is essentially just a bus shelter that, as part of this project, that will be demolished. The stairs, the ramps, the bus shelter, that will be demolished.
Is... does the crossing where we had the tunnel before, does that have to be the crossing point? Or can we move... you know, one of the problems I had with this was how far it was to walk from the parking lot to the station. Can we move the station farther to the north, shorten up the access from the parking lot? And then perhaps...
Maybe one of the reasons I say no is because the bridge is in approximately the same place as the tunnel. And in the future, if land is acquired on the Birmingham side, it fits with the plan that was designed to have access to the platform from the Birmingham side. And the land that needed to be acquired, it was a small amount and it was very tight to fit everything that needed to be fitted, fit in with the access road, with parking, with the ramps. It was very, very tight. That's the reason why I say it's best to keep it where it is, but I wouldn't rule out moving it either. The other thing is, there's some utility boxes that are near... I don't know if it's shown on this, but that are near Doyle that may be in conflict. But anyway, that's... I just have just a little bit more. If I could get you out, then we could talk about it. Thank you. There are some design items that shall be considered unchangeable due to cost, time constraints, or other limiting factors that may have been extensively studied during the preliminary design phase, for which we do not have the time or the money to go back and re-study those things to come up with different alternatives. These items include the Doyle Drive bus lifts. Those bus lifts are dimensioned such that they fit four buses at a time. There is nowhere else you're going to fit four buses like that, unless you put them in a parking lot and you have to redesign and so on and so forth. And we are not about wholesale, doing wholesale redesigns because we won't get the job done in a two-year timeframe and within budget. And I'll just run down the rest of the list. Location of Doyle Drive pedestrian crossings. Parking lot configuration. Bridge location I have here as well, but maybe it can be changed. We'd have to look at that. It wouldn't take too much, I don't think, to look at that either. Platform location and canopy design elements. The canopy, as you recall, was discussed at several meetings with Birmingham. And by virtue of the fact they approved the site plan, they approved they were happy with the canopy. It took a year and a half, several meetings with Troy and with Birmingham to build a consensus on the design. And we cannot throw out the canopy design and start all over. As I said, we don't have time. We don't have the money to do that. And it's already been accepted and approved by Birmingham. Building size, 2,400 square feet. We can make nominal changes, especially if we move it to some other location and we have to reconfigure things inside the building. The size of the building plan, we can't make wholesale changes to the size of the building. Floor plan, obviously, we can change the floor plan, especially if we move the building. Floor plan, obviously, we can change the floor plan, especially if we move the building. And major changes to building facade, we cannot change. We can change, obviously, the building gets changed, the elevator location might change, so we might have to change the shape a little bit here and there. But we're not, for example, going to have an L-shaped building, whereas currently we have a square building or a triangular-shaped building. It's not, we cannot make wholesale changes to the building and still get the design done and the construction done in the two-year timeframe and within budget. And as I've said, these elements have already been designed. We worked for over a year and a half developing these designs. We spent lots of money with our consultants. We achieved consensus between Birmingham and Troy, and both sides approved the site plan with those elements. Now, we need your assistance to look at those areas that have changed, which is, you know, we've added a bridge, deleted the tunnel, and we have a flat area, whereas before we had a ramp and landscape. So with that, that completes my presentation. One other thing I would mention, though, is format of the workshop. We'd like your input, maybe you could come back at your, I noticed there's a November 22nd study you need. Maybe that could be a topic of discussion, on what you think the format for that workshop should be. I think there was a workshop conducted once before. Unfortunately, I was not at that workshop, but it involved putting ideas up on the board and trying to get a consensus on those ideas, and then coming up with the one that seemed like everybody was in paper. But there's many other formats that you might want to do as well. So that's the end of my presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Steve, I'm not familiar with the tracks and the connections. Could you describe it a little bit more, and why it wasn't these little, I just don't understand why, you know, that didn't work out.
Well, the East track is in poor condition. CN has talked for years now, and now they're, it seems they are becoming more serious that they're going to rip out that East track. They don't want to maintain it anymore. They don't want to spend money on it. Amtrak wasn't thrilled about going onto the East track either because of the condition of the track. It slows them down, so they would lose, doesn't seem like a lot, but to Amtrak, it's a lot. They would lose several minutes off their schedule because of the condition of the East track. FRA was not willing to spend federal funds on building these switches on a track that might get ripped up. And the other thing is that we could not, there was no one who was stepping up to say, okay, we're going to maintain those switches for 20 years. FRA required a 20-year maintenance of the switches. Somebody's got to step up to the plate and say, okay, I'll be on book for the cost of that. Nobody wanted to do that.
So, and forgive me, I just don't know that much about trains, but...
We had several conference calls with FRA, and Bill was on all those conference calls, and if there's anything to build that...
Let me ask you this, a very simple question. Do you only enter under a train from one side of the train? Could you enter out, are there?
No. One side only.
So you only enter under a train from the one side?
One side.
So if you were to switch the tracks, from the Westley track to the Eastley track, would they have to walk around the train in order to get to the...
No.
The west side of the...
No, they would use the other door, but they don't allow crossing from the other side. You know, you can't, you can't enter from both sides at once.
No, but you can enter the train from either side.
Either or, yeah. Yeah, either or.
Okay, so but the train here would have to be on the Eastley track, going north or southbound.
Yeah.
That's the issue, basically. And the switch gear would move the train from the, normally, it would travel on the Westley track, is that it?
Normally, on the Westley track, the station in Royal Oak is on the West track, so between there and here, you got to bring it over to the East track. And then from here to Pontiac, you got to bring it back again to the West track. So it's a one and a half million dollar switch gear. FRA thought it was wildly underestimated that it would cost more than that. And again, the maintenance of that, nobody wanted to pay for.
Well, thank you. It's just unbelievable that it costs that much.
I know. And again, we were real close. We thought we had the track switches figured out, one and a half million, we're all, we're under budget, everything is good, and then FRA said, no, wait a minute, time out. We're not going to fund this.
Do you have a question, Mr. Schultz?
I think it's a question, and I don't know if anyone has the answer or if there is an answer, but doesn't my memory serve me that there were two parcels of land that Birmingham needed to complete this, and the parcel it fell through was the southern ring road? And that they in fact controlled the northern part that originally belonged to the school system, I believe? So is it possible that we need to look at where the building and the elevator are going to be so that Birmingham might have access to the platform from the property they already own, instead of the property that they decided not to buy? Maybe Birmingham just wants to wash their hands of the train station completely. I don't know.
I think that the property, they only had a purchase agreement.
They don't...
There was a time limit on it, and that's Birmingham was pushing at that time. It was, I think, capable of time.
Okay.
They needed to, they had an agreement with the school that the school wanted either a yea or a nay, because if they didn't, if they weren't going to go through with it, they wanted to do something, they wanted to market it to someone else. I don't think they only...
No, they don't. Currently, Birmingham does not own any property.
What is the construction cost estimate right now for the construction of the project?
The total cost, including everything, is very close to what the grant amount is, which is eight...
Eighty-four, eight-five to twelve.
Eighty-four, eight-five to twelve.
Construction is about six and a half million.
Six and a half?
Yeah.
So the software costs make up the difference?
Many, too, was C, the E, and the C R.
Six and a half.
Steve, wasn't a big part of the construction cost the tower? Is the bridge taking that share of the cost?
It is, yeah. I mean, we save some because we don't have all of the improvements on the Birmingham side. And had we gone with that original plan with the Birmingham side, we would very, very, very likely be spending Troy money and Birmingham money over and above the grant monies in order for that project to go. So we've saved quite a bit, and we're within, we've lost the LED that was 1.3 million. In that original plan, that was with the 1.3 million and with the 8.4 million, and we were still above that. Now, we're within the 8.4.
I also believe that the original project, the joint project, included money for acquisition of the property in Birmingham. Did it not?
It did, yes, it did, but to the extent that it did not cover all of it, there would have been a Birmingham and a Troy cost. Yes.
I also have a follow-up question. With regard to the elevators, I know when we were at Mount Pleasant for the MAP Conference last year, a couple years ago, I noticed in their parking, they have elevators in the core of the towers, but they also have stairs that wind around the elevator. Has anything like that been considered, or is that extremely more expensive?
No, we just did not have time to consider anything.
Okay, okay.
You know, we just, for FRA purposes, for getting our DA approved based on a plan on a visual that they could see, we put the stairs right there.
The big advantage of that was that when you're going up the stairs, you're going to cover the atmosphere as opposed to an outdoor. And those, I'm assuming those are not going to be covered, those stairways?
Depends on what you think.
They have to either be covered, or those stairs have to be heated.
Most, I don't know if most, but some are covered, some aren't. And as far as the bridge is concerned, you know, there's a question of should it have the climate-controlled HVAC in it, or should it be open? Right now, we don't have HVAC included for the bridge.
Anything further?
Just had one question. I noticed that there was a fee structure that was 1.9 million, I guess. How much of that has been utilized or used up?
Zero.
Zero?
Zero. We've not used any grant funds.
Oh, so this is all...
We've done all these modifications ourselves.
Oh, okay.
We haven't done, we haven't used any grant, used any grant ones.
Oh, I see, okay. I was just curious.
Not a question, just, so it's, as Steve indicated, we've got a pretty tight timeline because the project has to be completely finished within two years, and the clock started ticking a month ago. We've got one planning commission workshop to get consensus from the planning commission over this, so I think Steve had a good idea, is maybe in November, we can, we can, have a study session, we can talk about the format of the workshop, how long we want it to be, you know, what are our goals for the, what we want to accomplish during the workshop, because it's only, it's really important that it's one meeting with the planning commission, and then whatever consensus we come up with, we provide to the architect engineer who's going to be there, and then they take your ideas and you evolve them.
Brett, you and I and Steve met several months ago. We were starting to talk about this workshop, and one of the things I'd be interested to hear from the city's perspective, who is going to be there to represent the owner of the project to make decisions to say, yes, that's a good idea, to their consulting architect to say, develop it or run with it, or no, that's not going to be something we're going to pursue?
Well, the city project team, which includes myself, includes Bill Burey, it includes Mark Miller, and it also includes representation from the building.
Mitch, pardon. Mitch Kuzma. So will that be part of the workshop outcome that day? I mean, as we go through and talk and discuss ideas and, you know, dialogue and ideas and, you know, sketch things, whatever, with the end of the day, when the meeting is over with, I assume the architect will have marching orders as to what direction to go and what not to do. So I would assume that those decisions would be made by the team, the owner team.
That I just described, yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Mr. Van De, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to moving this along. That's for sure. All right, next on the agenda is public comment, or items on the current agenda. And seeing you don't hear him speak, we'll move on to planning commission comment. Mr. Massey, do you have anything to say?
Uh, no.
Mr. Strack? Mr. Crank?
No, thank you.
Mr. Schultz? Mr. Evans? Mr. Olmeyer?
One quick question. I know there's a lot of improvements being done to this, because I believe it's a sandy building, maybe it would, did that come to the planning commission?
Yes.
I guess it did. That must have been...
They approved it. You'll be happy to know.
What's their name? Zach?
I've got nothing.
You said that? Nothing, all right. Well, this meeting is adjourned.